Timing. Settle the way and Hummer, I think so. All right, it's seven o'clock, gonna call the Hermiston, uh, December eighth, city council meeting to order with a quorum. We have seven or six members present currently, uh, Council Roberts is attending also by, by Zoom. Um, and Counselor, uh, Barone will be here late. So we're, we're good with that. So at the moment, we're at six. Uh, with that, uh, can we please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Outstanding. All right, two, three. Citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to, this is our first opportunity for citizen input. Uh, anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following, limit your con comments to not more than five minutes, state your name and address, and direct your comments to me. Do we have anybody that wishes to do so? Seeing none. All right, next up consent agenda items. We have A through F. Uh, any council questions on consent agenda items, A through F? Any public comment on consent agenda items, A through F? All right, uh, do we need to? Do we need to remove any items? Seeing none. Uh, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items, A through F?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by everybody but Counselor McCarthy who got the second. Uh, I guess we'll go.
Oh, no, I tried.
I guess, uh, no, maybe not. Almost everybody, uh, we'll go with Counselor Duran on, cause she's closest and her sound travels fast. Uh, for the emotion, uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. And no items removed. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance twenty-three seventy-seven, Yumitila Electric Cooperative franchise. Uh, city attorney Tuvie will now read the ordinance.
Mayor and, uh, council members, so as we've been looking through our, uh, we've been working on a charter review with a charter review committee and, uh, going through it, uh, we have looked through the different sections and in our ordinance adoption section, we have, uh, under the ordinance, it can be adopted or should be adopted at two meetings by a vote of the majority of the council, or it can be adopted at a single meeting, with a unanimous vote. And to just streamline and get in, into the process of, uh, closer to the process of the charter, uh, I would say that we've always been operating uh, lawfully under our charter, the way that we've been doing in the past. But this way to kind of keep things moving forward, uh, in a process of either the two meetings or the one meeting, uh, what we've looked at in this process tonight is that we'll start with the reading of the title, and then we'll be able to present the information through staff, uh, allow for comments from both the council, mayor, and public. And then we have some motions, uh, that the, the mayor has, uh, that we can review. And so we, we would ask that we could move forward in that fashion.
All right. City Manager Smith?
Well, first, he's gonna.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, I'm with you now.
I went through all my.
All that?
And then I didn't read the title.
Mr. Tuvie?
Mayor and, and council, uh, ordinance number two-three-seven-seven, and ordinance repealing ordinance number two-one-one-one, and ordinance number two-two-four-eight, and granting to Yumitila Electric Cooperative, a cooperative corporation, and to its successors and assigns a non-exclusive license and franchise for a period of twenty years to construct, maintain, and operate in and on the present and future streets, alleys, bridges, and public places of the city of Hermiston, electric power lines and appurtenances for the purpose of supplying electricity and electric service to the city of Hermiston, the inhabitants thereof, and others, subject to the terms and conditions and to the making of the payments specified in the ordinance. Mr. Mayor?
All right, now that we've got the process figured out, right?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'll turn this to Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this evening we'll be discussing really a package of two actions this evening, so I'm actually gonna be walking through, um, both ordinance twenty-three seventy-seven as well as, uh, resolution twenty-three ninety-eight together, just because although they are two completely separate and distinct actions, uh, financially, they are linked together. So I think just for ease of your understanding, I'm gonna present them both at the same time, but, uh, you'll take action on ordinance twenty-three seventy-seven first, but I'll present them both together. So, uh, in summary, uh, first off, the ordinance twenty-three seventy-seven, what this does is it grants a new franchise to Yumitila Electric Cooperative. Uh, it could generally be considered as business as usual, uh, so all of the terms, conditions, everything in, uh, UEC's existing or previous franchise uh, remain the same, uh, UEC's been a great partner for us to work with for many years, uh, we see no reason to make any changes to how that system works. Uh, the only change, uh, really of any substance at all, is, uh, we're actually recommending to reduce, uh, the franchise fee, uh, that's included in the, uh, franchise agreement from seven percent of their gross revenues down to four percent of their gross revenues, and so I'll get into that in a little bit. Uh, first off, for anybody who's watching or maybe new to the process, uh, what is a franchise? Uh, so a franchise is an agreement that allows utilities, not just electric utilities, could be telecoms, uh, or other utilities, to use publicly owned rights-of-way, uh, to serve their customers. And so ultimately, this really benefits our own residents, uh, because it allows them to get utilities. So if we didn't allow electric utilities, or telecoms, or of gas utilities, uh, to use our rights-of-way, it would be a lot harder for you to get electricity, or internet, or phone, or all those types of things. And so, so it really benefits the residents for us to allow them to use our, our rights-of-way. Uh, but by having these franchise agreements in place, it protects the public by really regulating who gets to use, uh, the right-of-way and how they get to use the right-of-way, uh, so that it doesn't just turn into a total, uh, free-for-all that'll ultimately ends up inhibiting uh, the ability for different utilities to provide services to the, to the residents. So that's what a franchise is, and that's why we go through this process. Uh, terms on this agreement, as I mentioned, identical, uh, to what they've been in the past. Uh, only changes, we're recommending to reduce the franchise fee from seven percent to four percent. Now, the fees, uh, I generally refer to the, the overall package just as simply the franchise fees, uh, but, uh, embedded within that overall seven percent, a portion is what would be technically referred to as a franchise fee, a portion of it uh, is being referred to as, uh, an occupancy tax, a tax for occupying the right-of-way. Uh, taken together, uh, they total, uh, seven percent. And so really, uh, they operate exactly like a sales tax, really, um, because they're seven percent of the utility's gross revenues. So, uh, for example, if you have a customer who purchased a hundred dollars worth of power, um, Yumitila Electric knows that they have to turn over seven percent of their revenues to us, and so they, uh, also collect seven percent in fees and taxes. Excuse me. So the customer's total bill comes out to a hundred and seven dollars in that example. So, uh, let's see, yeah, so that's from the customer side. Uh, from the utility side of things, um, you know, it's really contingent on the utility to, to provide seven percent of the revenues. And so if you were just looking at from the utility, if they had revenue from all of their customers totaling a million dollars, uh, then they would ultimately owe to the city, uh, under the seven percent franchise fee scenario, they would owe us seventy thousand dollars. Uh, but again, just kind of making the point that, um, since it acts like a, uh, maybe. There we go. Since it acts like a, uh, sales tax, if, let's say, the utility's revenues, you know, uh, went up from a million dollars to ten million dollars, again, our fee rate had remained unchanged at seven percent, but now, uh, they owe us seven hundred thousand dollars rather than seventy thousand dollars. And so in that instance, if the utility's revenue went from a million dollars to ten million dollars, but our franchise fee was only four percent, uh, then we'd be bringing in four hundred thousand dollars. So simplistic math, because it is really pretty simple. So, uh, we have seen a significant growth in, uh, electric power consumption within city limits, uh, over the past eighteen months approximately. So, uh, in calendar year twenty-twenty-four, uh, Yumitila Electric Co-op's, uh, fees and taxes, uh, to the city in total uh, was about four hundred thousand dollars for the year. Uh, but now in calendar year twenty-twenty-six, we project, uh, that if we were to drop the franchise fee from seven percent to four percent, uh, the total amount paid in fees and taxes to the city, uh, would still nearly quadruple, uh, to about one point five million dollars. So, uh, of course, this begs the question, why would we reduce, uh, the fees or taxes? So, you know, since twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, you know, or through, uh, calendar year twenty-five, revenues have already tripled. Um, and so if we reduce the fees, uh, on the utility, um, the only way that the utility collects revenue is by collecting it from their customers, which are our residents and our businesses. And so reducing these fees and taxes lowers costs on the residents and businesses. And so, uh, if we are to reduce our franchise fee from seven percent to four percent, uh, that means it would be reducing, uh, that total bill on your typical household by three percent, going from seven to four. So that means that if you had a typical, uh, household in the community and their average monthly bill was about a hundred and fifty dollars a month, then reducing that by three percent means that that household would save about four dollars and fifty cents per month, or about fifty-four dollars per year, if we were to reduce the franchise fee from seven to four. So, uh, also in terms of, you know, why would we reduce these fees and taxes? Because I think, you know, there's, uh, two different philosophies, um, in thinking through this. I think some folks would probably say, well, why would you reduce it? Um, if the revenues are going up and the revenues are high for the city, uh, why wouldn't the city just hold on to these revenues and put it into something like a rainy day fund? You know, build up a reserve, and so when an emergency comes along, um, then you can, you know, tap that reserve. You know, the other philosophy in terms of how to address a rainy day is, you know, leave the money in the pockets of the residents and only raise revenue when you actually need it. Um, and so I know that it's politically challenging, uh, to raise revenue, uh, nobody likes to, to raise fees. Uh, but I think it's also important to keep in mind that, uh, it's also, it can be politically challenging, um, to just sit on a large rainy day fund. You know, if we were to just be, uh, building a large pile of cash, um, and calling that our rainy day fund, um, I think you don't have to look very far in other, you know, state budgets and other government examples where, you know, you build up a large, you know, emergency fund or a large rainy day fund, and suddenly, everything starts to look like an emergency, or everything starts to look like rainy day. And so that's why I think our recommendation is simply, uh, you know, I think we have a, a long track record of operating a pretty lean organization. Um, and so when we, uh, come across a need for additional revenues, uh, we will let you know, and we will come to you, and we will ask you for it. And so I think this is just kind of, uh, adding to that track record that, uh, we're recognizing that moving forward, uh, the revenues that would be coming in off of this would be very significant. And I think rather than building a large cash reserve, uh, we're recommending to simply reduce that franchise fee, reduce the amount, uh, on all of the businesses and residents in the community, um, and we'll still see a significant increase in revenues even, uh, with that reduction on the fee. So the recommendation, uh, for this ordinance would be to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty-three seven. Now I'll also get into, um, some background now on resolution twenty-three ninety-eight to walk through a little bit more on the financial impacts of, um, approving that ordinance that drops it from seven to four.
Mr. Morgan, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
Uh, for the record, just wanna let the record know that, uh, Counsel Barone has made it and is part of the council now.
Appreciate it, Mayor, thank you.
You got a question?
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, instead of going on to the next resolution, I would like to see, uh, we discuss this first one. Cause I have some questions and.
Yeah, so I have a, I'm really positive that all of your questions are probably gonna get answered in this, uh, upcoming piece. So it's really intended to be presented as a, a package together because, um, they do really play off of each other, and so we can take questions at the end, but I, I could take some questions now. Uh, let's see, so with this resolution, uh, resolution twenty-three ninety-eight repeals resolution twenty-two oh-nine, and so that was a, uh, bulk power incentive program, uh, which ultimately, uh, the only users of that bulk power incentive program are, uh, the data center industry. And we anticipate that by repealing that resolution, um, and by reducing the, uh, franchise fee on Yumitila Electric Co-op from seven percent to to four percent, the combination of both of those actions, uh, the city will see a net increase in revenue of between one to two million dollars per year, uh, projected every year through twenty-thirty. I'm only projecting through twenty-thirty because, um, I think we anticipate significant increase beyond that, um, if the data center industry continues to grow, um, but based off of really what we know in the here and now, um, that's what we feel comfortable with through twenty-thirty, uh, but we'll see what, what happens beyond then. So a little bit of background, uh, you gotta remember, data centers use a lot of electricity. And as we mentioned, uh, the utility franchise fees are simply a percentage of utility revenue. And so, um, the city, um, recognizing that fact, uh, back in twenty-twenty-two, was working with, uh, the data center industry, um, and recognizing, you know, uh, some of the other communities, uh, engaged in these types of incentive programs. Uh, we offered a bulk discount incentive, uh, that would ultimately yield more revenue for the city if we were to offer an incentive program for large electricity users in the community. So the existing incentive, the way that it's structured and what was approved back in twenty-twenty-two is that any customer in the city that purchases enough electric power in the city, um, to the point that they would in one calendar year pay more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in franchise fees alone that end up coming to the city, uh, then the city would, uh, after that customer comes in and proves, yep, here's how much I paid, uh, in franchise fees this past year, then the city would turn around and refund back to them, uh, every dollar beyond seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, the floor would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, and so then everything beyond that would be refunded back uh, to the business that generated those dollars in the first place. So, uh, the intention being, you know, we'd like to see additional revenue come in, so we'd like these large power customers to come in, and so this would give them an incentive to do that. Uh, we also indexed that threshold, uh, to inflation, so the twenty-twenty-five threshold is, uh, now sits just a little bit under eight hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, it's been successful, a very successful program. So, uh, this graph shows, uh, just the franchise fee revenues, uh, to the city of Hermiston only from Yumitila Electric Co-op, and so you can see, uh, fiscal years twenty through twenty-four, uh, they were experiencing, you know, just kind of normal growth, you know, growth trajectory that we'd seen for many years. You know, we've been adding a lot of homes, you know, other business, uh, growth, uh, exists. Also, every time, um, they increase their rates, uh, themselves, then that increases their revenue. So, so we were seeing, you know, growth from about three hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars over the course of those five years. Uh, but then beginning in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we saw our franchise fees nearly double, uh, to almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Now that coincides with the, uh, beginning of actual operations of the data center industry inside the city limits of Hermiston. Uh, so then, you know, this graph actually doesn't look as, um, startling, uh, when you look at fiscal year twenty-six, uh, and that's because we're only four months into fiscal year twenty-six, uh, but that chart shows uh, that we're about one point one million dollars in, uh, franchise fees received, uh, through the first four months of fiscal year twenty-six. So all the other years, that's an entire twelve months, uh, that's only showing, uh, the first four months. So very successful in generating additional franchise fee revenue. So, uh, why end the program? Uh, well, number one, uh, eliminating the program would increase revenue for the city. Additionally, it would, uh, mitigate some financial uncertainty, uh, on the city's part. So, um, we would be sitting on a, a large pile of, uh, franchise fee revenue, uh, that any, uh, anyone that generated that revenue, um, and exceeded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, at any time during that, uh, ensuing, uh, timeframe could come in and ask for their refund. So we would be, we'd be bringing in a lot of, uh, revenue that we probably wouldn't feel comfortable touching because we have an obligation to, to be able to refund it back to the folks that generated it. Uh, and then finally, we started talking with the, the cloud computing industry, really back in about over a year ago, uh, really in mid-twenty-twenty-four, uh, recognizing that this was coming and recognizing that they probably wouldn't be interested in actually utilizing this program. And so, uh, the, uh, industry itself that's located inside the city, uh, they've actually indicated a preference to just go ahead and eliminate the program. Uh, they would prefer to just rather eliminate the program and reduce the franchise fee across the board to all customers in the community, uh, rather than participate in, in the incentive program. So, sorry, I keep having to go back and double check, cause I'm concerned that I'm gonna skip a slide, cause it's so sensitive tonight. Um, so if we look at, uh, what this will end up doing, so, uh, under the current scenario, uh, what we project for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. So calendar year twenty-twenty-five, we project that just UEC's franchise fee revenues alone, uh, should come in about one point six million dollars. Uh, now, if we were, you know, still operating the, the program as it is now, uh, out of that one point six million dollars in revenue, uh, we would probably have to refund about four hundred thousand dollars of that to the cloud computing industry. Uh, so our net revenue would end up being about one point two million dollars. You know, that's still about three times what the, our annual revenue was in twenty-twenty-two, so a significant increase. Uh, but we would have that expense of about four hundred thousand dollars, uh, to go back out as part of the incentive program. Drive me crazy. Okay. As I mentioned, the, uh, industry prefers to eliminate the incentive program. Uh, now this absolutely will increase costs on the data center industry. So, uh, right now, uh, for their operations, um, they're, you know, they would be capped essentially at eight hundred thousand dollars per year if they were to avail themselves of the program, uh, and ask for refund. So it's just a shade under eight hundred thousand dollars is what they would be paying. Um, but if they were to completely eliminate the program, uh, we generally estimate that they would probably be paying somewhere in the range of around two million dollars a year uh, in franchise fees, if we were to eliminate the program and set the franchise fee at four percent for all customers across the city. So under this scenario, eliminating the incentive program and reducing the citywide franchise fee from seven percent to four percent means that the data center company themselves would pay an additional one point two million dollars per year more than what they otherwise would be paying. Now, why would they do this? Uh, it's because, um, their electric usage is, uh, an important trade secret in the data center world. And so, um, if they were to come in and request the refund under the, the program as it is now, we as a public agency would show, have to show, well, here's how much we paid out. And so it wouldn't take, uh, a forensic accountant much work to just reverse engineer how much we paid out, and ultimately, you'd be able to pretty quickly arrive at a number of how much, uh, electricity they used. And so they have a financial interest, and they would prefer to pay us one point two million dollars a year more, just, uh, to go through that process. So, uh, just kind of in general, and across the board, four percent fee rather than a, uh, seven percent fee, your typical household's gonna save somewhere between forty and sixty dollars a year. Uh, the data center industry is gonna be paying an extra one to two million dollars per year. Uh, so the net to the city means that the city revenues will increase between about one and two million dollars a year. Uh, now finally, uh, something else to keep in mind is, you know, what's really the market? Uh, what are other communities doing with these things? So our current franchise fee on UEC is seven percent, we're proposing to bring it down to four percent. Um, other cities across Oregon, uh, their franchise fees on electric utilities, uh, range from three percent all the way up to nine percent. Uh, I would say the bulk of the market, most of the other cities are in, you know, that range a lot closer to five percent. Uh, there's a handful that are down at three percent, uh, some like city of Hermiston are at seven percent currently. Uh, there's one outlier up there at nine percent, but, so four percent certainly has us, you know, in the market, uh, of where an appropriate franchise fee would be set. Also, important to keep in mind, and this just kind of goes to a competitiveness standpoint, uh, in terms of being economically competitive for the data center industry and those types of things, you know, without even looking into other states, um, it's important to keep in mind that, um, if a data center is to locate on land that is outside of an incorporated city in Oregon, if it locates somewhere out in unincorporated Yumitila County, their franchise rate is zero, um, so counties in Oregon are expressly precluded from charging franchise fees. So, um, that's, I think, important to keep in mind. Uh, also, you know, uh, we didn't arrive at this in a, a vacuum, so we've worked closely with our, uh, partners at City of Yumitila for many years on, on our franchise strategy. Now, back in the early days of the data center industry, at least in, uh, Yumitila County, circa two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe, uh, the city of Yumitila at the time implemented a citywide cap on all of their electric franchise fees at a million dollars per year. And so what that meant was, as soon as, um, an electric utility collected a million dollars in the year, then they stopped collecting, um, franchise fees from all their customers, uh, ever in the city entirely. And so, uh, that was a hard cap, it didn't index up, um, but it made sense, uh, for the city of Yumitila at the time. Uh, but by twenty-twenty-one, they had done some work to modify that upward, uh, with the expansion of some additional data center development in the community. And so that was, uh, around the same time that we began discussing with them our incentive program, um, going through this process with the, the regional cloud computing operator. Um, City of Yumitila had their, um, existing franchise fee strategy was set to expire at the end of twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, so the program that the city council in Hermiston adopted, we also set to expire in twenty-twenty-nine, so that, um, when the time comes, uh, to renegotiate any of those things, uh, we'd be in more of a regionally powerful position, we wouldn't be able to be played off of each other. So, so we've been working closely with City of Yumitila on, on these strategies for quite some time. And then additionally, you know, from a, a statewide markets, uh, standpoint, you know, I mentioned, um, the different communities in the state that have franchise fees and what those are, um, but not all cities have, uh, large electric users or, or large data centers. And so, uh, we began back in around March, April of this year. Um, we started to reach out to other, what I would call, data center impacted communities. And so, uh, really, we have a, an aim for data sharing, knowledge sharing, making sure that, that we're really maximizing our market power, um, in dealing with the data center industry. And so, uh, we've pulled together this collaborative alliance for regional technology and economic leadership. Um, and really, it has representatives from City Hermiston, City Hillsborough, the DOWs, Bryanville Boardman, Yumitila, Arlington Madras, Stanfield Echo Pendleton, and the Confederate Tribes of the Warm Strings Indian Reservation. And so that's been a really, uh, positive group, uh, we've met several times here over the past year. And so, uh, meeting with that group also makes me feel very confident that, uh, we're right in the market and with a good figure. Um, if we were to bring our citywide franchise fee rate down to four percent and eliminate that economic development incentive for the data center industry. So just in summary, really, there's two actions before you this evening. Ordinance twenty-three seventy-seven, that is required in order for UEC to continue operating in the city. Um, so that is a, uh, franchise agreement, renews on the same terms for twenty years, but we are choosing to reduce that fee from seven percent to four percent. And then resolution twenty-three ninety-eight, that eliminates our incentive program, uh, for data centers, that's really just between the city and the potential data center, uh, industry. So together, uh, we anticipate seeing a net increase in city revenues of between one million and two million dollars per year. We anticipate more with potentially additional growth in the data center industry. And then also, this would be reducing costs by three percent on all of our other, uh, users in the city with your typical residential customer, uh, in UEC's territory, uh, seeing a savings of around fifty dollars per year. So that was an awful lot of numbers flying around, and I'm sure there's questions, so.
Okay, uh, now, questions on ordinance twenty-three? Well, we can just do questions for both of them, can't we? Okay, so questions from the council on either one of those, or all the stuff that's out there?
I'm just gonna say potential conflict of interest on twenty-three ninety-eight, I'm just putting it out there just in case.
Okay. Noted. Okay. Questions?
Questions? Councilman.
Okay. I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm understanding what's going on with this. As it changes, lowers franchise fees and occupancy taxes from seven percent of gross operating revenue to four percent. Please explain, uh, a little more detail like I'm in kindergarten, if you please, all to all my questions, thank you. Um, how, uh, demand of electricity growth within the community directly from the data center industry?
Explain, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, I can.
Like I'm a kindergartner.
Okay. Okay, explain, uh, how the demand of electricity growth within the community directly from the data center industry?
Yeah, so we know that the data center industry is a large electric user. We know when they began operating and we know when we started to see that significant growth in, in revenues. And so it's really following exactly what we expected to see. And so that's where we saw the revenue growth for U E C, if I may get back to it. I guess the, 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 the tripling in franchise fee revenues match up exactly with what we expected from the beginning of the operation of the data center industry.
Okay. Is the reduction in fees to compensate the increase in data centers, you see more electricity?
No.
Okay, uh, can you explain who the economic development incentive program was benefiting?
It was for any large, um, power user. So it did, it did not specifically name any individual user. Nobody has availed themselves of it yet. It would probably be the data center industry, probably the one that's operating in the community currently. Uh, but any lar- very large electric user could have used it.
Okay. Um, the, can you explain, please, the twenty twenty six revenues increased one point five million? When twenty twenty four was four hundred thousand, when franchise fees decreased?
Yeah, so, um, as I explained, we anticipate that because of the significant increase in power consumption from the data center industry, even if we drop that, um, percentage that we're charging from seven percent to four percent, even with that, there's so much more power being consumed, that's what's driving that increase in revenue.
I just have a couple more questions.
Okay, just keep it under five minutes.
Oh, is that been, is that a new rule now?
It's been a rule, yes ma'am.
Oh, okay. Is that also with comments? I'm just wanting, I want to.
It's just with rules, it's just with questions at the moment.
Oh, okay. Okay, the repeal, uh, ordinance number twenty one eleven and number twenty two forty eight. It would have been nice if copies of these two ordinances were included, so I'm asking that next time. Uh, when there's some that's combined, if you could put them in our notes so we can go over those as well, make it easier. And under question four on ordinance, ordinance twenty two oh nine, the rebate of one point five million is the written, is the revenue increase under ordinance twenty three seventy seven, is that correct? Because it looks like a swap to me.
Yeah, so they're tied together. So when I'm talking about the net increase in revenues, it's a combination of elimination of the incentive program and the change on the fee in the ordinance. That's why I presented them together.
All right, thank you.
Council bro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had two questions, uh. The first of which was how many programs or I guess entities, uh, businesses qualified for the incentive?
We don't know yet, we can guess that there's one, but nobody has applied for it yet.
Uh, my assumption is that you're not sure because the business didn't request a reimbursement?
Correct.
Gotcha, so from this program, no entity has requested a reimbursement?
Correct.
Thank you.
I just have one.
Okay.
Um, if the county charges no franchise fees, why would they not be a bigger draw?
That's a good question. Out in the county though, you know, that's part of Oregon's land use regulations. It's harder to build out there because it's, you know, different, uh, land use regulations. But also they don't have the other utilities like water and sewer and some of those things, so. But those can be overcome, I mean, there's examples. So there's a data center out right by the freeway interchange that's completely out in the county.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if there's no franchise fees, why that wouldn't possibly be a bigger draw?
Yep.
Well, yeah, I get, I, yeah, but that could be overcome. Cheaply, but yeah.
Other council questions? Council Roberts, you have any questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am curious, um, you know, we recently have been talking about curbside recycling and needing money for defense attorney work. Uh, this increased revenue, is it going to be limited in use or is it going to be general fund, uh, dollars that we can put toward things like that?
We chose not to get into discussion about how it would be spent. Does that really seem more like a budget discussion? So, there's no.
I guess my question though is it, will it go into the general fund or is it specifically tied back to having use it for utilities? I guess is a better way to put that.
Yeah, it goes back into the general fund.
And so if we maintained at seven percent and eliminated the incentive, um, we would be looking at potentially a revenue of about two point six million, is that somewhat correct?
Correct.
Okay. For reducing fees on the constituents, but I just wanted a whole picture about intentions are as far as, uh, these. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay, uh, any public comment on either? All right, council comments on, we'll start with twenty three seventy seven. Council bro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my only comments on this is, uh, I have a couple of words of what this whole, uh, process makes me feel about the, the city coming back full circle. Uh, a couple of years ago, we passed the franchise fees. And so I, I feel like this makes me feel like the city is being transparent, uh, honest and, and creative in, in its solutions. A couple of years ago and just, uh, like Mr. Morgan pointed out earlier, uh, we, there was a need. We said, we set the need at a certain percentage, that's what the council did. And so, uh, for it to come full circle a couple of years later and for there to be a, a, a proposal of elimination, uh, of an incentive program along with a, a discount really for, for our constituents, I think is, is, is a great idea, it's very creative. Uh, it comes full circle and I think it's very transparent on the city's part, uh, to know that, hey, there is a surplus here. There is a way that we can, uh, benefit in both businesses and constituents. So I, I think it's a great idea, uh, so hats off to, to the city for coming back to this, uh, full circle. Um, and even from the proposal at the very beginning, I think the incentive program, uh, did its part. I think the, sounds like the city came up on top on that, uh, specifically because nobody e- ever ended up claiming a rebate. So it sounds like the city was able to keep, uh, the money that it kept. And, and so now that it understands, uh, its financial position to be able to, to give a discount to, for the, for that idea to come from city staff and for it to be proposed in a council meeting and for it to be discussed and flushed out like it is today, I, I think is, is kudos to the city. So thank you very much, city staff, for your leadership on that.
Other council comments? Council council?
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity. Um, this is a win-win-win scenario. The data centers get to keep their trade secrets, um, but they continue to pay the franchise fees. Our residents get to pay a lower, um, a lower fee, which is great. And the city gets increased revenue. It's hard to see where we go wrong by passing this. Thank you.
Other council comments? Okay, my turn? Oh, Council Roberts, yes, Council Roberts, you have any comment?
Uh, no comment, thank you.
All right, so I, I tend to be on the same, same page as what Council Kelso and Council Bron had said that, you know, it's not often that we get to sit up here and honestly look our constituents in the eye and say, hey, we're going to cut something, it's going to cost you less on at least one thing. And today we're, today potentially we're able to do that, to give money back and.
And get more by doing it.
And, well, we're getting, it sounds like we're going to get it more anyway. But the, the bottom line is, is that, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be cutting, cutting some if nothing else. And so by, by a cost cutting, a cost savings measure to, to, uh, one of our partners, being able to save money is, I, I feel, I like I said, a win-win-win on this one. So yay for us, if nothing else can be said. Okay, uh, motion, okay, we have two op- two options. Motion, uh, num- option number one is to adopt ordinance twenty three seventy seven at a single meeting and become effective thirty days after adoption by city council. Or if we have, if it is not unanimous, then we have to do it at a second meeting and a second, uh, yeah, the, this, we'll have to have a second reading at a second meeting as we used to do.
I motion for option one.
Okay, so you're making a motion to have a, uh, to.
Approve ordinance twenty three seventy seven.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Okay, second by Council Hayward. All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Council Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, done deal. So, uh, we don't have to have a second reading or we have a second reading here? No, that motion will, will, uh, get us to where we need to be and I appreciate the council and working through the process with us on this one. Yes, a little bit newer than, different than what we've been doing, but it, you know, it, it's, we're, we're, we're adapting to changes and getting streamlining the process and then, so I appreciate everybody's patience with me on getting through this too as well, so. All right, next up is, uh, twenty three ninety eight, eliminate economic development incentive program related to of electric utility franchise fees and repeal. See manager Smith?
We've talked about it, so if there's any additional comments or questions.
Okay, council, any other, uh, questions? None, okay, public comment? Nope, okay, council comments? Council Roberts, you want to weigh in on any of this?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Okay, don't want to leave you hanging there, sir. Uh, okay, uh, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty three ninety eight and lay upon the record?
So moved. Second?
Uh, coun- moved by Council Doron, seconded by Councilor, uh, Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Council Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, eight o- eight zero. Okay, well, there we go. We've done a, we've done a, a thing that where we're able to, uh, save our constituents some money. I cannot, I cannot thank you guys enough for wading through this process the way we did. Um, we should, I'm, I'm proud of y'all. And Mr. Morgan and Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your hard work in making this accomplishment, so. Next up, resolution twenty three ninety nine, airport agricultural ground lease. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Morgan again.
Mr. Morgan?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I promise this will be quicker, so. Uh, so in general, this is, uh, just simply a one-year lease on, uh, a hundred and forty acres of farmland up by the airport. Uh, in total, are generating revenue about sixty three thousand dollars. A little bit of background, uh, that red outlined box is the hundred and forty acres that we're discussing. It's off the east end of the airport, uh, immediately adjacent to E O Tech, uh, next to Ot Road. Uh, so originally, uh, the entire concept of this is to allow the airport to extend, uh, its runway off to the east. In twenty seventeen is when we formally began the process in February of twenty seventeen. Um, the F A A moves slowly though, so finally in twenty twenty five is when we purchased the hundred and forty acres for about two point one million dollars. Uh, we were fortunate to, to continue to receive a little bit of bump from some COVID dollars. F A A actually funded the purchase of that at ninety five percent of the purchase price. Uh, the city funded portion also includes some, uh, city, uh, investments in redoing some of the irrigation infrastructure. So total cost out of pocket for the city came down to about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. Uh, some of you may also remember, uh, when we were purchasing the property, we included a provision to allow the existing owners to lease back the property, uh, after multiple offers or requests, they declined to lease back the property. So that put us into a position a little bit behind the eight ball timing wise to, to get it advertised for this, uh, twenty twenty six year for utilization. Uh, but I'm happy with how it, things turned out for us, maybe. There we go. So, uh, in June, we had the property appraised for lease, uh, that came back with a range as appraisals do of between fifty five thousand dollars a year and eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, that higher end portion of the appraisal was, uh, specifically more for, uh, long-term leases, uh, three and five-year leases. So, uh, it was indicated in the appraisal that shorter leases, you know, more like on the length of one year, uh, would likely end up at the lower end of that lease, uh, appraised range. Uh, so we set about marketing the property, so we physically mailed, um, flyers to twenty-three of the existing neighboring farms up in that vicinity. Uh, also we installed large signs on the field, uh, directly on Highland Extension and on Ot Road. Uh, and also did some digital advertising to make sure that, uh, folks who would be, uh, qualified were aware that it was available. And then ultimately we opened bids, uh, on December second, last Tuesday. Uh, and I was happy that we received, uh, three bids from, uh, otherwise qualified, um, local farmers. All of them local farmers, all of them qualified to, to farm the land. Uh, and all three actually came in within that appraised range, uh, which is good. So, uh, we're recommending that we, uh, direct staff to enter into negotiations to execute a, a lease agreement with bidder B who, uh, offered to pay us sixty three thousand dollars to lease and farm the land next year. But with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Council questions? Seeing none? Uh, public comment? Nope, okay, uh, council comments? The, none, I guess I'll say something. So sixty three thousand dollars. And we have a hundred and fifty three thousand into it. So basically in three years, any money after three years at approximately that rate is all pure for the good of the order.
Yep, we're pretty excited about this.
So just as a, in a, I mean, as probably a budgetary thing, but, uh, my, my thoughts on this is, is that, you know, at some point in time that we're going to be improving that or using the, creating, you know, an extension for the airport and such. Um, I don't know whether we can create a, a, um, silo basically for that money to basically go into for that project.
Yeah, so I think maybe for, uh, a sense of scale, so this will be generating around sixty three thousand dollars in revenue. Um, right now, um, the city's general fund subsidizes the operations of the airport, depending on the year, in the range of around a hundred thousand dollars a year. So this will go a long ways toward closing that subsidy. Um, also, just kind of for a sense of scale, um, are all of our other leases, so we rent out individual hangars. We also rent out some of the land at the airport that some large box hangers, uh, sit on. Uh, in total, those currently generate around a hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. And then the, the net profit that we receive from the fuel sales, that's really our only other revenue source up at the airport, is around thirty thousand dollars a year. So between the existing lease revenue and the fuel sales, we generate net positive revenue of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. So this is equivalent to increasing our revenue by about fifty percent just with this. And, and the intention is, um, we set it to a one-year lease because there was still some questions about, um, how, back in the summer, uh, there were still some questions about how we would, uh, go about, um, severing this property's irrigation system from the parent parcel that we acquired it from, uh, so we're working through that, that's some of the additional cost. Um, but so we wanted, uh, to get it out there for a one-year lease. And then once those irrigation questions are, are finalized, uh, then we'd like to just rotate it into a longer term lease, which will probably generate higher, uh, revenue per acre. But so we, we wanted to, to get in. To get in and get a lessy, uh, earlier rather than later.
Okay, well, my, my thought was, is that any, any profit that, that we make on this that we. Set aside basically for when the time comes that we have to do our work on the airport. Whether it's the, it's, you know, the extension of the runway and, and the dogleg that we're going to have to create with Ot Road. That we have that money set aside as opposed to trying to come up with the money when that time comes. So, just a, just a thought for, for future planning, so. Okay, um, with that, um, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three ninety-nine, lay upon the record?
Motion adopt.
Second.
Been moved by councillor Hayward, seconded by councillor McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a yes.
It's alright, he paused, he totally paused. Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass, passes unanimously, eight zero. Motion, uh, resolution twenty-four hundred, uh, adoption of the IGA for IT services with the Umatilla Hospital District. City manager Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, um, continue, uh, in, in a good way to make friends and. And, uh, our IT department is doing a good job and that word gets passed around, so. Um, the Umatilla Hospital District, uh, came and approached us, um, interested in IT services. They don't have a lot of needs for IT, uh, they have one computer and, uh, a few board members, so. Uh, this is a very limited contract, but they are interested in having some stability in their services, so. Uh, the contract before you is for sixty-two hundred dollars a year. And that, at set a rate of a hundred and thirty dollars per hour, and it also includes what we're putting standard in all of our contracts, a three percent inflationary. Increase each year, so happy to answer any questions.
Council questions? Councillor Linton?
Will we need to hire an, eh, another individual or can the OT handle?
The current staffing should be able to handle this because it's not a lot of load. We do have, uh, an open position that was approved in the budget, but we have not filled it due to. Uh, we, we don't have a, a contract need for any additional staff at this time.
Alright, thank you.
Other council questions? Other comment? None? Pub, uh, council comments? Councillor Kelso?
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity as a fellow IT guy to praise our city's IT department. They're a great group of guys, a great group of people to work with. And they're very professional and they do a great job, in my opinion, so thank you to the IT department.
Excellent. Any other council comments? Councillor Duron? Okay, uh, yeah, what he said, our guys do a really good job down there and it's obvious the, uh. Where, we're the, we're the pe, place to go for, uh, public, public service in IT department, so. I, I don't need to say a whole lot more than that. Uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty-four hundred and lay upon the record.
Motion adopt.
Second.
Uh, been moved by councillor Hayward, seconded by councillor Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes unanimously, eight zero. November monthly financial report. Mr. Plaisos?
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Uh, before you tonight is the monthly financial reports for the month of November twenty-twenty-five. Um, the Hermiston River Renewal Agency, we are, uh, but currently still on. Wait mode for the North Hermiston River Renewal Area Project that's going, um, we, we still anticipate bidding before the end of the winter. Or by the end of the winter for this project. The general fund, we are fifth month into the fiscal year forty-two percent, forty-one point seven percent into the, the current fiscal year. Monthly revenues ended projections, over projections by about one point two million dollars primarily due to the timing of the receipt of. Uh, property taxes for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Um, we have received eighty-three percent of budgeted property taxes through the end of November. And approximates past, the past three fiscal years, which were eighty-seven, eighty-seven and eighty-two percent or eighty-five percent on average respectively. So that's good news. Monthly expenses were over projections by one point three million dollars. Um, because of the timing of the presentation of these reports, um, there's not much difference between. This month and last month as reporting for November and October. Uh, still the two point seven million dollars that we transferred for, uh, to the building, the newly created building fund. Um, resulted in that two point seven million dollars and is impacting that one point three one million dollar, uh, over projection for expenses. Um, city council, airport and non-departmental for, uh, non-departmental for just what was mentioned, uh. Prior are over budget due to the LLC membership that's paid annually, capital outlay in the airport for some hangar projects. And then the transfer to the building inspection fund. Parks and pool, I'm glad to report that. There was four departments that were over budget, all related to recreation, um. Uh, parks and pool are the only ones that have remained over budget at, at the end of November, um. Pool, I think, is over by about eight percent, parks is over approximately two percent, so we're. Streaming back into, into alignment, and again, that's due to seasonal activities. Special revenue funds, EOTech, uh, the revenues in the, um. In the EOTech Fund and the financial reports do not reflect any reimbursement from the campground project. Um, those are, actually, we should start to see some of that in December, so. So that's good news. Uh, the street fund is sixty thousand dollars below projection for revenues. This is strictly due to timing of the federal for gas tax turnovers. Uh, this is, they arrive in January or February, so we anticipate getting those. They just on an annual basis. HES funded expenditures were approximately. About five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars over projection. They have an annual debt service that we pay in November, so that's. One-time debt service for that, for this fiscal year, so that's reflected in this month's, uh, reports. Regional water fund is approximately forty-two thousand dollars over projections and this was due to. Uh, ongoing transfers for future maintenance and or capital projects that we have slated in the future. So, or other maintenance projects, so that we're saving money for those repairs. Um, I will let Mr. Morgan address this.
Yeah, so a lot of the projects are moving forward. Gear and Harper Project, uh, we anticipate putting out to bid here the end of winter, early spring. For construction in twenty-six. Uh, regional water system backup generators, uh, still in design, long lead times on those. Uh, well, number six coronation structure should be putting out to bid here in the winter. Uh, lift station number should be seven, uh, is, uh, going to be going out to bid here in the winter as well. East Av, East Evelyn, uh, sewer line, uh, that'll probably be going out to bid more like the spring. Um, Orchard Avenue Waterline Replacement, uh, will have a big impact, uh, here next construction season, but that'll be going out to bid. Uh, here in the next couple of months as well, and then the Dogwood Northwest Second Street, um, designs actually, uh, begun already and. Uh, that should be going out to bid here in the winter as well, so, uh, these things kind of follow, uh, uh. A timeline, and so we get into design with a lot of these projects in the fall, but a lot of them have to bid here in the wintertime, so that's why lots of these are going to be. Heading out the door and, you know, should be awarding a lot of contracts here in probably February, March timeframe for a lot of. Construction to take place in the summer and fall. Uh, the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project, um, is continuing to move along, they're starting to erect. The building to go over the top of, of that well, and then, uh, well, number four controls project is continuing to move forward and. Uh, they should have that wrapped up before the irrigation season twenty-twenty-six. And, uh, the Southeast End Street Bridge Project, um, is moving along, um, I mentioned last time. Uh, that one's going to be kind of counter cyclical to our typical construction process because we'll have to be doing. All of that work or most of that construction work during the wintertime when there's not water in the irrigation canal. Uh, also up at the airport hangar, um, the building should be getting its certificate of occupancy very soon, so. That's what I've got to report.
Alright, the library, uh, they were, they're in this week finalizing, we hope, uh, the remainder of the punch list items. Sherman Park will be following the, um, schedule that Mark outlined as far as going out to bid here in the winter. For hopefully a, uh, twenty-twenty-six summer construction. And the Public Safety Center continues to, um, be on target for an end of February, early March completion. And I believe that's all for that.
Okay, um, council questions? Councillor Linton?
On the, uh, report on page nine, um, I'm just not following that, so. It's with EOTech and it's a lot of red and then it says it's, uh, total expenses of eighty-one percent, so.
Yeah, so, um, included in the EOTech budget this year is the construction of the RV park. And, um, we just submitted paperwork, we just received the final paperwork from Amazon and submitted for our first reimbursement. And so that's why it's in the red because, um, we haven't received that revenue, but yet we've been spending money on, uh, design. For that project, so, uh, once we get that first payment, the, the red should be equalized.
Thank you. I didn't even have in my mind.
Councillor Burrow?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I apologize if you mentioned this earlier, but the right-of-way. On first place, uh, and the sidewalk, can you give me an update on that again? Sorry if you mentioned it already.
I wish I had a better update, but it's still hanging with the railroad.
Any other council questions? Seeing none? Uh, public comment? Seeing none? Council comments on the financial report? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the November monthly financial report?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved by councillor Linton, seconded by councillor McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports, uh, let's see here, do we have any committee reports? Talk about the, you can go ahead.
We had our public infrastructure committee meeting just before this, um, I think probably the most notable thing to mention is that. Our regional water system now has a master plan in place, we've basically, I'm trying to remember how Mark put it. Basically been operating off of some documents from the nineties, um, which were fine for the time, but now we actually have some proper direction. I know some of you were here for that, um, so that's exciting, and. Don't feel like I'm missing anything else really of note, but now we have some direction.
Looking at other options where, for supply, um, and we were apprised at, you know, who the. That, the, basically, the, the direction that it's going and how it, how far, how far we've come and where we're, what we're working towards. You know, the master plan's going to take care of a bunch of things and so, Mr. Morgan's been working hard at. Getting that thing. Hooked into shape, so to speak, so to be complimented on that. Any others, parts of that?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, any other council committees? Councillor Burrow?
We have postponed our tabled our EOTech committee meeting, we did not have a quorum for this month. Although councillor, uh, Kelso and I were ready to be there, we did not have a quorum, so we'll be. Uh, meeting at our next regularly scheduled EOTech meeting.
Any others? Okay, well, um, I do have one, uh, we had the charter review committee here, uh, last week and. Got through all of, uh, section seven, all the way through to section seven, so. We're actually moving right along on that, on the process and. There's a very strong likelihood we'll have a finished product to you, to show to the council, um. Within a short amount of time, I think, we, I don't know that we can make the, the May election, but, uh, it's. It's, if you hold your breath and hold your mouth just right, it's possible. But, uh, you know, for all intents and purposes, uh, the product that, that, you know, what we're, what, what's been going on at that meeting. And, and, you know, everybody's putting some really thoughtful insight into it and I have to, have to say that the committee has been doing. A fantastic job at getting us, you know, a good, good base to operate from as, as a council and I think. I think the city is getting good, going to have some good, uh, direction from this, so. Um, I, the next meeting I believe is on January third, eighth. Uh, if you have the opportunity to attend, I think it would be a good, uh, a good chance to, to, you know. Way in and hear what, hear what they're talking about, so, um, aside from that.
Um, where's that located at?
Right here.
Your lease.
Right here, yeah, question?
Yeah, when, when do we anticipate then it potentially coming on the ballot?
Well, the, with, I would say with a, with fairly certainty, it'll be, it'll be able to make it on the November ballot of next year. Of twenty-six, however, you know, like I said, if, if, if we get through it as fast as we have at this point, there's a possibility of. Getting it to the council, yeah, but I don't know, it's.
Okay, so this upcoming November then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 it's, for sure, I'm, I'm, I, I can say with pre, pretty fair certainty that it'll make the no, that no, the November. Election, but, you know, my hope is, is that it, we move along and get to even sooner than that, but we'll see.
That's good. My, my thought was going to, if it was next year, it's usually a non-election cycle for us, so. There would be, I think the city would have to pay a little bit of money to run that election, but since it's joining the other elections, it's.
Correct.
Going to be, that's a good deal, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, save us money in that respect, I guess, but, uh, no, it's a, it's, the, the, the folks, the, everybody that's involved with it is very. Very much, uh, taking, taking the, the thought to heart and asking good questions and providing, you know, we're getting good feedback. Amongst, amongst everybody present and, uh, uh, Mr. Drotzmann, Dr. Drotzmann is doing a good job of. Leading the, leading the process, so. That's about it. Alright, so, no other council committees, mayor's report, my turn, I get to continue talking, which is. Yay, um, just as a reminder, uh, this is the only meeting, uh, for the city council is this, is today and there is. The, the next one has been canceled by council request at the last meeting, just so everybody is, is aware of that. Um, so because of that, you know, and because of what, the reason. We have Christmas coming up, so, uh, we have a lot of things going on and as it relates to Christmas and in the city, um, I. Decided to be a little festive today, so, any case.
Love the parents.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Um, so, uh, we had just had the tree lighting on, on Thursday, uh, I, I was able. I was, yeah, so unable to make it as the mayor, I was, the mayor was not there. Um, but I do, do hear that Santa made an appearance and so he was, I was the belle of the ball for a little bit anyway. Uh, the, uh, tree, if you haven't had a chance, when you, when you, as you exit, take a look down the street here and. See what we got going on, it's, it looks very nice, we changed it up a little bit on the, the manner that it was done. And I think that this way worked a little bit better, personal opinion. Um, it looks, it looks like it, it worked out really well. We also have, uh, the city has pancakes with Santa coming up on the thirteenth. And, uh, EOTech has the lights, light show and the. Uh, tallest Santa in the Pacific Northwest up there at fifty feet tall. That's bigger than, that's bigger than a lot of things, I think that's the biggest thing in the county, city right now. Uh, aside from that, um, we, what's that? If doesn't get too windy, yeah. Um, also, as a, just as a side note, um. As, as it relates to, uh, elections that we talked about here a little bit ago, uh, I have noted that we now have. Candidates for every ward who have signed up, so, uh, we have a, you know. There's still plenty of time to sign up, um, I've, I know it's been said, I think, believe it was can, councillor. I know it's been said, I think, believe it was Counselor Litten, that always mentions the fact that, you know, having more than one person on the ballot is a good thing. It creates a little bit of, a little bit of, not necessarily competition, but, you know, it gets people to talking so that you can hear what people have to say. So if there's any others that are still thinking about running, please put your name in. We look forward to seeing you. You might have to sit up here with us. Have to. Well, with some of you. Okay, uh, Council President report?
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing on the thirteenth, and I know the mayor talked about Land of Lights, which was going on basically all through December, but they do very specifically, also on the thirteenth, have the Holiday Market at Candy Cane Village. At that time, also, we'll be announcing the winner of the home lighting. We received, as far as I can tell, no businesses entered the lighting contest, but we'll have judging announced for the Hermiston Home Lighted Contest on the thirteenth as well.
That it?
That's it. And then Christmas is coming up, so Merry Christmas. I'll take my moment to say.
Santa Claus is coming to town. All right. Uh, council reports? Counselor Litten?
Not a report, but first I'm going to start off by thanking the Police Department for the cards. I just noticed that was from the Police Department. Thank you very much for that. That's very nice. But I would, I would like to see the formal documentation or ordinance of where it says that you, you, the city councilors are limited to five minutes of asking questions. I would like to see that. Actually, I'd like a copy of it, please. I don't know if that would be you, City Manager?
Yeah, I, I believe that's the council rules. I'll send you a link.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I think it's a direct attack.
Oh, excuse me?
Nothing.
Okay.
The event that was for the tree lighting and the parade was really, really spectacular.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Was really spectacular, and they had, you know, participation from a lot of different groups, and it was really nice to see.
On that note, I gotta say Park and Rec did an amazing job. A lot of people came up to me and said, man, they loved it. It was great, the way it laid out and everything. Just got to pass it off. Park and Rec, you hit it out of the park.
Yeah.
Any others? Counselor Kelso?
Thank you. I would just like to say that on Saturday, we had our thirtieth anniversary of the, the Festival of Trees, and it was a successful event. To remind everybody, that's a fundraiser for the Hospital Foundation and for the Kiwanis Club. Everyone had a great time. I'd like to thank all of the volunteers who put many, many hours into that project and the people who showed up and, and bought things to raise money. And I'd like to also thank Parks and Rec. They did a fantastic job of getting the building ready for us. And I'd also like to thank Counselor McCarthy for saving my bacon on a microphone malfunction, and he figured it out. So thank you, Counselor. But that's all I have.
Counselor Brown?
Well, it's good to be back. Thank you for holding down the fourth. Last one, I was very sick, so I wasn't feeling well. So I do want to say happy belated Thanksgiving and happy early Christmas, so to each and every one of you guys. And I'll see you guys next year.
Okay.
It's a school joke.
Any others? City or Youth Advisory? Youth Advisor, do you have anything for us?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything, but I did have a speech and debate tournament on the sixth, and it was really fun.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Were you a part of it?
Yeah.
And how'd you do?
Um, I think I did well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if, were you in debate or in the speech? That was probably me. Were you in debate or speech portion? Debate? Lincoln Douglas? What was your topic?
Roy.
That's awesome. I was in speech and debate when I was in school. I think that's awesome, so that's cool. Thank you for sharing.
All right, Mr. City Manager?
I just wanted to have you look in your email in the next day or so for you can participate and be a part of judging those, the houses that have been decorated and picking the, the winner. So we'll send out the form. You can return it, and then any, but you, if you don't, it's okay as well. There'll be a group that'll do it, but you can have a part of choosing the, the hot, the winning house, if you would like. So I'll be out later this week, and I have no other items.
All right, it sounds like that's it, so we are adjourned.